We call the meeting to order, the special meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protemhaney.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. I think I will hold the pledge until for the regular meeting. The agenda for the special meeting, I think we have just one item, is that right? Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, if there's no objection, the agenda is approved as submitted. The, excuse me, item number one is the review of the city protocols to continue the review process. So, Mr. City Manager, I think it's just we're picking up where we left off?
Pretty much picking up where we left off, just to note in the staff report, we note that at the special meeting on June 26th to discuss the draft protocols, council also directed staff to make following edits which were incorporated into the draft that's in front of you tonight. One was to modify the commissioner selection process, which is on page 15. This would change the, so that would no longer require interviews for incumbent commissioners. Also, it would limit the ad hoc interview committee to just the mayor and the mayor's choice with other council member. The other change that is in the packet from when it was presented to you on June 26th, modifying the council meeting order of business, have the council's top three priority items follow presentations, and 30 minutes of public comments to follow the top items, and then an opportunity to reopen at the end of the meeting for additional public comment, should there be the need and the desire for council to continue.
Okay, well.
Could I just go on record that I didn't approve that?
No one has approved anything, but we'll be happy to record you as a no vote when another comes up. Okay.
Anyways, we provided the updated materials, and I know we also have some comments from the councilmember Wyrick as well.
Okay, by way of background for the subcommittee that went over these, Randy and me, our goal was primarily just to clean them up. We had stuff that was in there from, what, six, eight years ago or longer that didn't apply any longer, so we took that out. There were a few minor things, I think city attorney clarified things like reminding people about electronic communication, but all pretty minor. So, I guess the question is, is whether we are going to adjourn to Carpenter's Hall or wherever it was to redraft, you know, the Articles of Confederation into a new constitution or whether we're just doing cleanup. I received a, I guess we all received some other extensive reviews that Bill had done, so Bill, do you want to, or did, well, first of all, Paul?
Just before we get started, I want to thank councilmember Wyrick for providing the protocols for Calabasas. I thought they were very well done.
Yes, it was a nice example, and our city attorney is very familiar with that.
Did you draft, did your office draft those?
I can't take all the credit, but it was my office, Scott Howard, and then, of course, some folks from Calabasas.
Because I thought that they were well drafted and succinct and understandable, so thank you.
Yeah, I would agree, I think that they were, there was considerable similarity between some of the more recent suggestions for ours, but the one thing I did note was that theirs appeared to be much more behaviorally oriented and less process oriented, so, you know, if we're gonna make any major changes, we probably won't get it all done tonight. But is anybody else before Bill?
And then, Mr. Mayor, if I could, there's just one, one, and I saw it, and I, this is really the only issue that I came up with in my review, so I would like to hear councilmember Wyrick's comment. And that has to do with the preparation of the agenda. In one, hold on, and I will tell you. Okay, it's one of 30 of Attachment B was one of the areas, but that wasn't the real specific one that I had.
Are we talking about page 21 of 31 of the Red Line?
Yes.
Attachment B or A?
It's Attachment B, it was, it's labeled on, the one that I'm talking about is I-30 or 1-30, but I'm looking for something else. It wasn't necessarily that, I had it highlighted, but we're looking at three different renditions here. Okay, all right, I'm looking now at Attachment C, page 19 of 28. And this is just semantics, but I saw it switched in a couple of locations, and I just wanted to voice my opinion that I like this language. And it reads Agenda Development. Are you there, Mr. Mayor? It's Attachment C, 19 of 28.
1 of 73.
1 of 73.
Attachment C, page 19 to 28.
Right, and it's, it's also I-73, I think it's.
How many Attachments Cs do we have? Oh, okay, okay.
It's confusing.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and on that, under Agenda Development, underneath that, where it says Agenda Development, it says, "The city manager determines, in consultation with the mayor, which items are placed on the city, on the council agenda and the timing of scheduling such items." That's the way it's worded there, yet elsewhere it says that it's reversed and it says that the mayor, in consultation with the city manager, determines which items are placed on the council agenda and timing for scheduling. And I, I think that the city manager, in consultation with the mayor, is the way it should be read and not the other way.
I agree, and I think that's the way it is in our, we present.
Yeah, but if you look, Councilman, Councilman Wyrick, in his sheet, changed, said it should be the other way around.
No, I said it should be the way you're talking about.
Oh, okay.
It was the other way around in Attachment B, page 21 of 31, where it says, "The city manager determines, in consultation with the mayor, which items are placed on the council agenda," and I think that's reversed.
You think it should be the mayor in consultation with the city manager?
Yes.
See, and I'm saying I think it should be, "The city manager determines, in consultation with the mayor."
Okay, well, then I disagree, and I'll give my reasons for that.
All right, so that's, that's the issue that I bring.
Okay, will you have a second to your motion from me? Okay, Bill, go ahead.
I'm gonna start with the premise that if you're an independent self-directed body, you have to be in control of your own agenda. Basic principle. And if you cannot, that cannot be delegated, otherwise you lose your independence and your self-directedness. And every protocol that I saw, that I looked at, including Calabasas, makes it very clear that the presiding officer, the mayor, is the one that determines the agenda in consultation with the city manager. In other words, it's not, the preparation of agenda is an essential element to being an independent self-directed body. And that's why I suggested some language, one sentence of which the city attorney says to me is a violation of the Brown Act. But just getting right to, that's why I had in number 10, a suggestion that the, the language be changed, to say that the mayor, presiding officer, in consultation with the city manager, sets the agenda for each council meeting. Then point out that the, what it should include, then also, when it comes to the timing and scheduling of agenda items, that also is, is something that a self-directed body has to be in control of. And so, I don't think that can be delegated to the city manager at all, and that's why I added two sentences where the mayor, presiding officer, in consultation with the city manager, determines the timing for scheduling agenda items unless otherwise directed by majority vote of the council. It's left out that the majority of the council can determine timing in any way, and that takes away from the, again, the self-directed, independent nature of our body. And then, I added, "To two or more city council members' requests in writing or orally during a council meeting that an item be agendized, the mayor, presiding officer, shall place on the, a meeting agenda in consultation with the city manager in a reasonable timeframe if staff workload permits or is directed by the majority vote of council." So I think it's absolutely essential, if we indeed are not an advisory but an independent self-directed governing body, that you control your own agenda and that also, ultimately, the majority rules with respect to that process. So I just, I just think it is, this is something I think is really critically important.
Comments?
Well, I, it may be just a matter of semantics. The, the Calabasas says, "The mayor, in consultation with the city manager."
Yes.
This says, "The city manager determines, in consultation with the mayor."
Right.
My, my thought process is that either way, the mayor is gonna be involved in determining the agenda, but the mayor can't dictate without the city manager saying, "Here's what we can, here's the proposed agenda." And in consultation with the mayor, coming to an agreement with that, I find it backwards if the mayor is gonna go, do the agenda and then go and discuss it with the city manager.
Well, that's not what I meant, I think consultation with the city manager, certainly the mayor then is in control of saying, "City manager, give me a proposed agenda," of course. But the city manager's managing the agenda process. And, and if there's a difference of opinion between a city manager and the mayor about what should be on the agenda, what the scheduling should be on the agenda, that's the mayor's call. And the way it reads is, is not clear that that is the mayor's call. In other words, to me, the final decision on agendas and scheduling, certainly in full consultation with the city manager, is the mayor's job or the majority of this council. That's the call. That's the authority. And I don't think that anything should confuse that that in fact is the case, and in fact, and I repeat again, if you look at, I looked at a number of city council protocols, and they all word it the way I'm suggesting it and the way Calabasas has it.
I, I think it could be accomplished with, I just think the first step on the agenda should be through the city manager, then consulting with the mayor, and then you could add something, "The mayor shall, shall be, the, the mayor shall, shall decide on all issues of disputes over the agenda." I mean, I think you could say that.
I tried to come, I basically tried to get to that point.
Because I don't see.
In the simplest possible way, by really following the pattern that I saw at other city council protocols.
All right.
Other comments?
I would be inclined to agree with the language Bill is proposing and that Calabasas has, but with the understanding that it is a collaboration. If the city manager cannot meet the timeframe, that's just a fact, that's just a fact, there's nothing that can be done about it.
Sure, absolutely.
But the whole thing is a prior, you know, it's, it's, it has to be a collaboration 50/50, but I like the, I think your, your argument that the mayor takes the lead is correct. I, I'm comfortable with that. And especially if you're pointing out that's how other cities have the language, and.
We want to get you on record.
Shall I repeat my wonderful, intelligent comments? Yeah, as long as there's collaboration and somebody isn't ordering the other person around.
Okay, well, any other comments before I, Randy?
Well, simply for me is, and Steve and I had that discussion a month or so ago, and that was a misunderstanding, a misunderstanding as to who does set the agenda. And Steve was saying, I believe that night that he was, and I was under the impression that Steve works for us and therefore we set the agenda, and "we" meaning the council and as the chair of the council, the mayor, actually sets the agenda. Now, an agenda is, is a 50/50, if not 60/40, but the reality is, we have issues that are brought to us by the community that, that we have to resolve, and the city manager has issues brought to him outside of the, outside of the community that either has to be borne publicly to the community or has, has to have some form of resolution, whether it's a state mandate or something of that nature. So Steve does have to have input. Steve has to have the ability to add something to the agenda. But as far as making the agenda, approving the agenda, setting the content, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, I believe that's the mayor's role. And I think that night, that's where our conflict was, is we're both saying, yeah, you have, you have the ability to add, and you have probably the ability to write it, you know, the, the first draft, but ultimately, it's the mayor's role and job, I believe, to set that agenda.
Mr. Mayor, one more comment. Let me just tell you, having been mayor for two terms, there is no way that I would be able to sit down and put the agenda together without having the city manager give it to me first, and then for us to go over it and decide what's gonna be on it.
I agree.
So, why, and, but this says the, that the mayor is going to determine what's on that agenda. Ultimately, obviously, the mayor, being the elected official, is going to be able to tailor the agenda to, to this council, but I don't believe the current mayor, nor I, would be able to sit down a week prior to our meeting and say, "Here are the agenda items that we're gonna put on here."
And I, and I agree.
Through the chair, please.
I'm sorry, the chair, I'm seeking recognition, make a comment.
Okay, seek recognition first, then make the comment, I think we should put that in the protocols, go ahead.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay.
I'm seeking recognition.
Bill, yeah, right, okay, you're recognized, go ahead.
I, I think the reason that you see Calabasas and these other cities doing it that way is just to clear what the line of authority is. The line of authority for an independent self-directed body is that you're in control of your own agenda. Now, the mayor certainly asked the city manager, "Will you please prepare one?" And if we're in agreement, we're in agreement. But if there's a disagreement, there's two things that are gonna decide the priority in terms of agenda priorities. First, the mayor, and second, a majority vote of this council, and not the city manager. That's the bottom line, in my opinion, and the wording should reflect that.
Okay. I just have one more comment, please.
Okay, one more, and after everybody's had a comment, the mayor's gonna make a comment.
Right, so, so when I visit other boards, and I watch, for instance, Casitas Municipal Water District, and I watch their general manager run their meetings, it just, it just gnaws at me. It's, why are those five elected officials sitting there, taking everything that this general manager says as God's word, and then agreeing to everything that this gentleman has said? And I just, I see it there, I, I've seen it at other boards, and I, and it just, it just surprises me that, that any elected official would allow a subordinate, whether it's the city manager, whether it's the CDD director, whether it's any other body that comes before us, to tell us what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it. I'm just, I just disagree with that. Just completely.
Okay, as, let me make my comment, I might shortcut this a little bit. What does the city manager ordinance say regarding setting the agenda?
Well, it's, it's established in the protocols, I don't believe it's established in the municipal code.
No, I think you might want to check, okay, here, as, Bill, please.
I was gonna correct the record, okay.
Well, you may correct it after I'm finished, okay?
It does say something in the code about it.
Right, I'm glad that you are so concerned that the mayor has the right to set the agenda, but to have trouble listening to the mayor. As somebody who spent 50 years as a city manager and an executive officer, I have to tell you that, one, I've never seen this as a problem. What Randy just described is really the description of an organization who is basically using the staff as an excuse for not addressing certain public issues by putting it on the agenda. I have never found our city manager to, in the least, you know, a bit recalcitrant when any of us have suggested something for the agenda. We are a city manager form of government, we have three or four different ways in which to remain self-directed, and if we should get into something where our city manager is so obstreperous as not to cooperate with the city council, I think we need a new city manager. But the concept of a part-time or a rotated mayor, or even an elected mayor with no specific authority, needing to have this in order for us to remain self-directed, I think is kind of a distinction without a difference, and I think maybe contrary to the ordinance, but maybe not. So the city attorney can weigh in on that question.
The, the ordinance speaks to non-interference in the administration of the city by the council with respect to the manager, but it is silent as to how the agenda is structured, leaving the agenda to be structured as the council so directs.
Okay, you just read that, is that, or are you doing that from memory?
That's a paraphrase. I reviewed the section here, is 2307 in the ordinance, it speaks to interference in administration, which is a section that provides in summary that the council will not interfere in the city manager's management of the city.
Okay, well, I'm old and my recollections may not be what they should be, but I am managing a couple of towns in this county and the, and the county. I have never seen this as a real issue, and my bias is, is in favor of the paid, full-time administrator to do his job, and then we have several bites of the apple. Even when the mayor sets the agenda and sets the time and, of when it will be heard at the order, the council can change that at every meeting, that's the first thing we do. So I'm not sure why we're hung up on this, but Bill will explain it to us, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say, I want to point out to everyone that I made a definite mistake in my proposal that I have in writing to you when I suggested that agendas, draft agendas be circulated to all council members, that's a violation of the Brown Act, and I certainly withdraw that suggestion, number one. Number two, your argument is almost, "Let's do it the standard way." Well, the standard way is the language that I'm proposing.
According to you.
No, no.
According to my current experiences, not.
I, I'm talking about how the protocols are written in other cities.
Why then do we want to call it the presiding officer instead of the mayor? It seemed like you were to sort of erasing the title "Mayor" from the, the protocols, but now giving him some sort of special responsibility.
Well, I believe the mayor, I was trying to cover the base in terms of if you were indisposed and somebody else had to preside over the meeting, is all, you know? But in terms of the wording, which to me is the most important, the, what I, we are, what is in our draft here is not standard language in other city council protocols. And that's, that's, why would we have non-standard language?
Because all cities don't do it the same way.
And I think, that's why I think if, the argument should be that the standard language is meant to represent the primary characteristic of this body as an independent self-directed organization, and that means that the mayor and/or the majority of council is in charge ultimately of our agendas. Certainly, the city manager proposes agendas, prepares agendas, but the final approving authority is not the city manager, and the language should reflect that.
Can I just ask, all those other cities are also city manager form of government, right?
They're both kinds, both charter and general law.
How many cities are there in California?
So they have the same, both have the same language?
The ones that I found, yes. Now, I did not compile the council protocols of every city, no, I looked at the ones that I could find.
But Calabasas is?
Calabasas is.
Calabasas is a general law city with a five-member elected council and a rotating mayor.
So it's.
Like us.
So their language is.
Not like here, they don't have an elected, they don't have a separately elected mayor.
But they're a general law city.
Well, I know.
They are a general law council manager form of government.
Like, how we used.
How we were, exactly.
That's what I meant, yeah.
I think we're over-servicing the account, as they used to say when I was in business.
Well, I'm not sure how you want to proceed.
Well, I think we've got three, three straw votes in favor of changing it to, to make me more powerful, at least in the remainder of my term, so, you know, who can fight that? But I happen to agree with Paul that I think in the city manager form, where not all mayors will be like me and be retired and will maybe cherish this responsibility to be able to override the city manager. Steve?
If I could, and I've been, tried to stay out of this debate, but there's one, one point that I wanted to bring out, and I agree with councilmember Wyrick in terms of that the majority of the council needs to be able to set its agenda and control its destiny, I completely agree with that. The one thing that I wanted to point out is, I'm the one individual who has to respond to the majority of the city council, or myself and the city attorney, but of course, the city attorney's role is different. So I just wanted to point out that, and I would agree with you, if your city manager is not being responsive to the needs of the majority of your council, then you need to start looking for a new city manager. The other thing that I just want to point out is that I think the current process, or I would say perhaps the, what you're proposing, you could run up into a situation where you have a, a mayor who is not supportive of what the majority of council is trying to do. And so in that case, I'm not sure where that would leave us, other than perhaps trying to.
Oh, you're starting to persuade me to vote for this.
So, anyways.
But, just, Mayor, can I respond to that quickly? But, but again, that comes back to the council having the right, at the beginning of a meeting, to either approve the agenda or to move the agenda in any fashion that the council wants to move it to. So even if the mayor wanted to do something different than the other four people, those four have the right to stand up and say, "No, we're not gonna go along with you, that three of us or the majority are going to override you." That's the checks and balance here. So it doesn't, so it doesn't matter, and.
Right, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but in that situation, how would the council correct that if the mayor is still not going to put the item on the agenda that the majority wants to be addressed?
Wait a minute.
Well.
Two people can, two council members can still put an item on the agenda.
That's right.
Well, you're gonna need to amend some other parts of the rules for that. It seems to me, we try to micromanage everything, and our meetings are not exactly streamlined, so it doesn't seem like it's helping us a great deal, but everything comes in as urgent in the last minute, and we are gonna do it by committee. We are not a mayoral form of government, even though we elect our mayor, but if you want to give the mayor a little bit of staff, I'm sure he'll be happy to do this.
In my opinion, nothing is going to change fundamentally. We're actually in agreement as far as the process, I think, I think. We're just not in agreement on that one sentence, how it should read, that's all. But to me, nothing, nothing's gonna change. That's how I see it.
Okay.
No, I don't.
Bill.
Mayor Johnston, would you like me to be recognized just to go over my other points, or?
Well, yeah, okay, we've got a straw vote on that, I think, so far, so you may want to craft or include that in the redraft. Bill, go ahead.
Just to be, quickly go through my other points in order this time. Most of the other protocols don't limit, if there's a conflict between protocols and state or federal law, they also include the local municipal code. I think probably municipal code ought to be added in, that it, it controls if there's a conflict with the protocols, that was missing. I added, I thought a better focused procedure for the issue of absences, where the mayor declares whether the absence is, is permitted or approved, and that's recorded in the minutes, and that was an issue in this council, remember? We had an extended absence and a lot of controversy at one point with a council member, so I thought, that's, I suggested language for that. In terms of special projects, the mayor certainly has the approval to approve special projects, but I wanted to add that the mayor should inform the rest of the council, if he has approved a special project, just let the rest of us know.
Yeah, I had a question on that, I was wondering what a special project was, is there a definition of that?
No, it's just in the protocol where it says, go ahead, I'm sorry.
There is a definition, sorry to interrupt, it's defined in the contract between the city and my firm. It's defined as a, as a, special projects is a legal services project that is within the typical scope of general services, but would take 10 hours or more to complete. For example, writing lengthy, lengthy, lengthy ordinance, it requires approval by either the council and the city manager or the mayor.
So this is special projects related to the city attorney's office?
Exactly, that's solely what that is.
You could approve, and all I'm saying is that there was nothing in there saying, "Once you approved them," to let the rest of us know that you had, and that's fine.
That's a good clarification.
I added some language right out of Calabasas about the, the mayor's conduct as, as a presiding officer with no implied criticism or just standard language.
Which is which?
Which is on the number, item number four.
Where, where, oh.
On my first page of the handout.
Okay, I want you to read, what is, what is it that we're correcting?
What I'm suggesting is that the section on page 10 of 31 be changed to read, "The mayor is the presiding officer of the city council and self-facilitate council meetings. In this role, the mayor assists the council to focus on the agenda discussions and deliberations, and ensures that all views are heard and that the meeting progresses in an orderly and timely fashion. The mayor provides an equally, equal opportunity for each council member to be heard, the mayor is expected to be an advocate of his or her views, just as other council members, but not to take advantage of the mayor's status on the dais to coerce or to advocate in excess of what is allowed other council members. The mayor's role as facilitator should not be compromised by his or her role as an advocate."
Okay, I thought the one that we had, that the mayors have always followed, pretty much covered that. Have we had a problem with that in the past?
I'm just looking at the language there.
Okay.
Go ahead. Apologies, could we go back really quickly to point number two, which was the absences?
Yes.
And in your, in the draft language, if I read it correctly, it would say, "The member shall notify the mayor, city clerk, or city manager."
Well, my, my suggestion is that the, any of those three, since the city clerk works for the council.
As does the city manager.
As city man.
City clerk does not work for.
Excuse me, you're right.
Only the city attorney and the city manager work.
I misspoke, absolutely, I was thinking the deputy. I misspoke, absolutely. I was thinking the deputy city clerk. I, I stand corrected.
The deputy city clerk actually doesn't work, does, works for the voters. The city clerk works for the voters.
That is correct.
A dependent elected position.
Yes, yes, yes.
And so, that's why I, I stated it as mayor, city clerk, or city manager, that in the, in a, in a, you know, in a, in a situation that any, any one of the three would suffice for notification of a council member couldn't, couldn't appear. Like, let's say the other two couldn't be reached by phone, the other could.
I, I would recommend that you try to make the City Manager the, the primary person that you contact.
What if he couldn't be reached?
Well, then it would be my designee.
Okay, well, um, that'd be fine. I, 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 that's not a big deal for me, but I, I, I did think that the, the mayor should be the one declaring whether or not I believe the absence was, was permitted, was approved or not.
I have no issue with that.
But why wouldn't we just do that as a body?
Or, or do it that way. That's not the way it was written.
Oh, I thought that the current, current practice was that if somebody, uh, needed to have it declared as an excused absence, that this, the council could agree or not agree to it.
Yeah, the, the way the protocol was written is, it was assumed excused unless any of us subjected to that category, which I thought is a little different.
Mayor, I just have one question. What's the consequence for none of you approving my absence? Do I get a slap on the wrist? Do I get fined? Do I get, uh, how do I get reprimanded? What, what's the, what's the argument behind this?
I can speak to that.
You have to have a yoga dust.
Under the government code...
There's a government code on that.
Right. Under the government code, unexplained absences of 60 days or longer mean the seat is vacant. So, unexcused, unexcused, unexplained absences, 60 days, on the 61st day, the seat is deemed vacant by law.
If it's unexcused.
That's the consequence.
Well, I just wanted to make sure what my timeframe was, so I got 59 days.
So, so...
I had a hiatus and vacation.
So, if a majority, majority of us don't like Randy, and we declare that his absence while he's in the hospital is unexcused, we can get rid of him? Is that what you're suggesting?
It wouldn't be advised, because it would probably be a loss of him under those facts.
I think that's Randy's point, you know, that either it's a legitimate excuse, or it's not. Not up to the, to us to decide who is an elected official and gets removed. I mean, I, these are all behavior things that we're talking about now. I'm not quite sure why we're trying to nail it down that tight.
I just had to ask that. I wasn't sure.
And that's a very rarely-used provision. It's most often invoked when, um, council members just leave the jurisdiction and refuse to participate, or they decide that their business interests are more important than their public service.
Bill?
I would point out that we did have a, we had a situation of an extended absence of more than two months in this council's recent, fairly recent experience. Uh, Councilperson Blatts knows the details of that. And so, that, it, we did have a situation. Anyway, I, it's not, that's...
It seems to me that that's a, a legal issue, and between the voters and the elected official, unless we end up with having two people or three people where we don't have a quorum any longer, which is sort of a...
Well...
There are nights when I could see how somebody might want to play that card and not be here, but...
Mayor Johnson, you want me to go on, or?
Yes, please, by all means.
The other point I wanted to bring up was already alluded to by the City Attorney, and that is the, um, and I, I'll drill down to the, the most basic, um, point that I was, had a concern with. And that was a statement in the protocol in Part Five, that council members should not, quote, "communicate their concerns with respect to staff to anyone other than the City Manager." And that language is actually not in the cited part of the code, uh, which I pasted in here, section two point, uh, two dash 3.07, interference at administration. That statement in the protocol is not reflecting the citation that was given, uh, for that. I mean, certainly, this council should not get involved at all in the, in the chain of command with staff, absolutely. That's extremely important. But it almost seemed like there was a, uh, an implication that if we wanted to, if we were discussing a constituent concern out there with somebody in the community, that, um, we couldn't say anything about sharing a concern about something that was going on in terms of staff protocols or staff behavior. And I, I, that's not in, something that's implied in, in the cited code for that statement, so I'm not sure where in the code that protocol statement comes from. Again, the, the, it's, what's very clear here is you're not, you're not, you can't deal with subordinates except through the City Manager, except for purposes of inquiry, but the, the code then hastens to add that we can bring up anything we want, basically, in open session, in terms of concerns with the City Manager. Not a good, not good manners, not good, probably the way to do it, but I was really concerned about that statement, that, um, we should not communicate concerns, uh, about what's going on, you know, in terms of what people's experience with their staff when we're talking to them in the community to anyone other than the City Manager.
Mayor?
Let's hear from the...
I would just like to hear, who put that in it? Who put that in?
This, I think, would be section, uh, page 1 dash 37, section six on that page. And one thing to bear in mind is...
Where are we, where are we?
Are we back to the...
Page 1 dash 37, the page number's in the center of the page, which perhaps are the easiest to use, is they're the only unique ones.
I agree.
Okay. I got it.
And this is section six, uh, which you can see the red line edits there.
Yeah, it says, "Our community, uh, council members shall not reprimand employees directly." Of course, they shouldn't, and we should not. "Or communicate their concerns to anyone other than the City Manager." I think probably what that intends is that we shouldn't be going around talking to some staff people about other staff people, and of course, we should not. But anyone is quite broad and includes anyone in the community. Well, I have a concern about, about that.
Matt?
One point to bear in mind here is that there's a couple of documents that are controlling the council, unless changed. One is the City Code section cited in, uh, Councilmember Wirick's comments, uh, section 2 dash 3.07. Second is the city's contract with the City Manager, which provides in part, and we'll get a copy to everyone if you don't have your copy handy, in part that the council agrees to not communicate with anyone other than the City Manager regarding concerns with employees. I think that section should be bought, borne in mind while we're looking at this protocol section. And I apologize for not having copies handy now.
So, anyone is intended to mean anyone in the community, not just...
Correct.
Staff of the city.
But there's a distinction between, the distinction to bear in mind is there's a distinction between concerns with an individual employee. Bob made a mistake versus the city has made a mistake, or versus something is happening that's not, shouldn't be happening.
And I would agree.
Which is done by staff.
But I perhaps am...
I, I just, it's a concern, because it's, it's kind of hard to imagine, all of us get concerns expressed to us by constituents many times about what's going on with the city.
Mm-hmm.
And I wouldn't want to have there any implied prohibition about speaking with constituents about their concerns.
Well, there's a difference between speaking, receiving information, and giving information. Nothing at all, nothing prohibits the council from receiving information. That's the First Amendment. The distinction is what the council says in response.
Is this sort of a risk management, uh, idea that you do, you're fearful, or somebody's fearful that we're going to say something that will then, uh, expose the city to lawsuits or something? I don't quite understand why, I thought this provision originally was, "Don't reprimand and interfere with the administration of staff." Not, simple as that. Uh, if this goes beyond that, first of all...
And that's the heart of it.
Is, is the, uh, this whole thing, uh, these, I keep thinking of Johnny Depp and the Pirates of the Caribbean, when he said that, "Is this the pirate's code?" Or, "No, this is more guidelines." This is more guidelines, you know? Uh, it's guidelines for good behavior and the process by which we follow it. It seems to me, one of the things we could do to, uh, wrap this up at some point would be to have a provision, or two, two provisions in here. One, uh, there is a, uh, I think you got it, or I got it from, uh, what Bill brought back from Calabasas on page 10, which says, "Council members should be sensitive to the negative impact that inappropriate conduct has on public perception of the city. Council members should be mindful of the fact that they are representatives of the city in all of their public activities." And we had that provision in there, and then we had some provision that says that, uh, there would be, uh, a process for admonishment and a process for censure by the council of one of their members, first by saying, "I don't think you understood what that meant. Please don't do it again the second time. We say you are admonished to stop doing that, and the third time a censure." Now, communities do things like that. So, then we don't have to know everything, uh, and we might have a difference of agreement on when it comes to free speech and communicating with the constituents. After we get burned once or twice, I think we probably all will learn. Steve?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of quick comments. One, just to answer the question where this came from. This section six was in the original protocols. We're just, some modifications here.
Right.
I would read it the same way that, uh, several of the other council members expressed it, that really this section was written with the intent of talking about the coordination of the elected officials with the City Manager and the staff, to make sure that if there were concerns with the staff, that that was brought directly to the City Manager and privately to the City Manager. I don't, as a City Manager, have any expectation that council members are gonna have to mute out there in terms of if they're hearing concerns with how the city is functioning. You know, my only request would be that, you know, that it's not dealt with at an individual level, but certainly, general discussions about the city, how the city is performing, how the staff is performing, is certainly, was definitely in the interest of the council members, as well as the constituents they serve. So, again, staff looks at this really from the perspective of, uh, as the, as an internal rule, not to limit what council says outside, although, as the City Attorney has, I believe, stated, now, there are, there are some liabilities to the city if, if the council members or anybody were to go out there and start making comments about an individual staff member's performance, so...
Okay, Bill, continue.
Okay. Uh, in the interest of time, I'm just gonna skip around a little bit. On my number eight, uh, where it's on page 16 of 31 of Attachment B, representing, uh, the behavior of council members as council liaisons, it says, it states that, um, "Council members in this liaison capacity should remain neutral in any actions and should refrain from stating opinions that might influence an action or decision by the commission." Absolutely correct. However, uh, I always thought it was one of, appropriate for council liaisons to communicate majority vote actions of this council to, to the commissions. You know, there are, uh, there are, we, at, at times, we've done majority vote council direction to commissions. We, I've found myself sometimes reading the municipal code to a commission as a liaison. I'm not, I'm not sure that it, it should be implied that it's prohibited, or maybe this council does feel like we should not do that in any way as liaison.
Well, the communicating actions of the City Council, uh, formal actions, normally is the responsibility of the staff support for boards and commissions, and if they're failing to do that, then we have a different problem. But I don't think it's the, uh, council or, well, we, this liaison thing is somewhat unusual. I don't think that would be standard practice in most cities, where we send council people out to all the boards and commissions, and certainly not to have to replace the staff responsibilities. I think that as elected officials, we have the right to appear anywhere and say what we choose to say, but I don't think that, uh...
Well, I, I just want to bring up the issue. I'm not, it's, it's not something I feel is terribly important, one way or the other. I'll go to my, my next concern, which is...
Mayor, going along with that, um, there's two issues that I see here. One is where the council member interjects information, like you said, reading the municipal code, to the, uh, commission. I don't think that's appropriate. I think they should be getting their information from staff, not from a council member. And then the second one is, many times, I have never done it, but I've seen other council member do it. They will be the liaison, and they will get up, there'll be a particular issue before the commission, and they'll get up and they'll say, "Not speaking as a council member, but as a private citizen, I am totally opposed to this particular project." I honestly don't believe that's appropriate either. Now, I don't know whether we can limit council members, based on a First Amendment, not to speak up, but I do think it's inappropriate for council people to do that.
Well, we're comfortable with the language as is, and I just, that's fine.
Yeah, I think it has a chilling effect. Uh, we, we have volunteers serving on commissions and boards to use their best judgment to advise us, and for us to preempt that in any fashion, even though we say, uh, you know, "I'm speaking as an individual." If you're speaking as an individual who's elected to office and will possibly be, uh, reviewing this, it, it's pretty hard to separate the two.
Okay.
But Paul, did you say that you don't approve of a council man, member reading, uh, the municipal code?
That's correct.
Well, I would, uh, I think there are instances where that's appropriate, like, uh, when Councilmember Wirick read the code. Remember the, the draconian parking requirement for the, uh, beauty salon? And you correctly pointed out something that staff had missed. Remember the, what was that called?
Yeah, it was, I was reading, the, reading the, the code on, with respect to parking requirements and...
Yeah.
And options for looking at parking requirements.
That was, sometimes there's, there's exceptions.
Well, you're assuming that what the council member says is correct. All right? Staff is paid to produce staff reports that are supposed to be legally correct. I can get up and say whatever I want, maybe on an unrelated topic, reading out of the code to the commission, and now they are going to take what I say over and above what staff has said, and that's totally inappropriate.
Yeah, and I, I, I stand corrected if I shouldn't have done that, but I, it was a situation where the staff report did not include something that was in the municipal code, relevant to deliberations.
And that has happened, that happens.
But Paul's point, I think, is, is that no matter what we do under color of office, when we speak up instead of going through the normal procedures, there are gonna be mistakes made, you know? Or there are gonna be oversights. There are cases where I wish I had attended and, uh, read from the code when it came to the parking issues on another, uh, thing that was being approved, but I was told it was being approved as a variance, and they didn't bother to mention that they were waiving a hundred-plus-thousand dollars' worth of fees without any deliberation, and I was told there was no appeal to that. So, I mean, I sympathize with your point, that there are times when somebody needs to speak up, but I think that's the staff's responsibility, and if they, they, okay.
All right, I, so noted, yeah. Next item I want to bring, again, uh, in the interest of time, on page 22 of 31, uh, the, um, of the...
31, what is this, Attachment B, A, what are we taking?
Same, same attachment.
144?
Yeah.
No, excuse me, on page 21 of 31, Attachment B, under Staff Presentations Reports. The commission or committee recommendations are listed as a subset of staff presentations and reports. And I do want to point out, in fact, this dovetails with what we just discussed. I think that there ought to be a separate entry from, for commission or committee recommendations. That's not part of a staff presentation or report, because these, the, the commissions and committees report to us directly. There are appointees, and the, uh, the implication and the way this is set up is those reports go through staff to us, as opposed to be made in directly to us. And I was just gonna suggest that the committee or, or, or commission recommendations should be moved out of the section titled "Staff Presentation Reports" to a separate section titled "Commission and Committee Reports." And then I provide an explanation where the, uh, potential language of saying, "Council meetings should include the opportunity for the making of committee and commission reports," and add to that, if any, preferably provided in writing prior to the public meeting, including the opportunity for council to provide advice and guidance to committees and commissions. They, we are, they do answer to us directly, and it's, there should be no implication that that's filtered through staff.
Okay, do we have a note of that for any modification? Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, how would they communicate that to the council, other than through the, the minutes or the actions that were taken and recorded at the meeting?
Well, I would think that the chair would kind of make a report to us.
Okay.
Of that commission or committee.
But, but am I hearing that you don't want the committee recommendations in the staff reports going forward?
No, that's not what I said.
Okay.
What I, what I, I think it ought to be a separate heading, in other words, that there should be the ability for a direct communication between a committee and a commission and this council...
Sure, of course.
If they so choose.
Of course.
Which is, that's all, uh, certainly, they could delegate you, the City Manager, or staff to make the presentation for them.
Right.
But not the implication that it's part of a staff presentation or report.
Okay.
You see the distinction I'm trying to make here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Clerk have that? You got it on the tape, okay.
Um, Mayor, I'd like to dovetail while we're, while we're in that same area. And this, this again was, um, some of the conflict I had not too long ago regarding, um, same, it's page 1 of 44, page 22 of 31 on the, uh, Attachment B. Same, just flip the page over. And it, yeah, it talks about the agenda, and, and, uh, "Should two or more council, city, city council members request, then an item be agendized. The City Manager will place the item on the agenda." And then we have that crossed out at the earliest opportunity and then put in, in a reasonable timeframe as staff workload permits. permits. So, the question is, if two council members think that something's a priority in the community, has expressed that to them, do we have, do we have a right as council members to say, "We need that report by this month, or by this date, or by this date," or are we at the whim of the city manager, putting it based on his or her workload schedule?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, okay, Paul.
Well, according to the straw poll, you wouldn't go to the city manager, you'd go to the mayor.
Our majority vote, exactly.
Right, and, and the reality.
Mayor would have to decide.
And the reality is that a majority vote will determine what goes on the agenda, because it's supposed to be directed by the, the council, not by any one individual or even any two individuals.
Oh, so that kind of goes back to why the mayor and the council should be in control of the agenda.
Okay, we settled that.
And not the city manager. I just kind of wanted to bring that up a little, but, okay.
Oh, oh, God, true, that allows me to do it by myself.
Yes, you're back in power again.
And furthermore, the council can call a special meeting. If the agenda is too full, the council can volunteer to meet again next Tuesday. So, all of that plays into it.
Okay.
Mayor Johnson, I have two more things, and I'm done.
Okay, go ahead. I've got a couple of, I think we have a couple of cards here of people who wanted to speak on the protocols, so I want to.
Okay, maybe I should, maybe I should stop.
Well, they, they may want to be interested in what you're going to say next. Why don't you go ahead and?
Okay, I have two more items, and they're, they're items G and H, attachment B, page 31 of 31, our 1 dash 53. G states that it's inappropriate for a voting member to respond reluctantly, "Yes," or "Yes, but I agree with concerns voted, voiced by council member X." And I wanted to change that to incorporate what I saw in the Calabasas protocol, to say that discussion or debate regarding an item must be made prior to a vote. Council members are encouraged to express their reasoning for a position during discussion of a matter and make the reasons for their votes clear to their colleagues and to the public. This is important when the council is divided on an issue. Discussion and debate should not extend to the act of voting on an issue. I like that language better, and my suggestion.
Yeah, but they're, they're really kind of talking about two different things. One, I think ours says that we don't have the discussion, call for the vote, and then as, you know, in a lot of places, you push a button and a light goes on, so that there's no advantage or disadvantage to how people are voting. But if, we're going to go around the table when it gets time for the vote and make comments at that point.
I agree.
After others have voted. So, it seems like there's two different things, and I would agree with you. I think that the way it's worded in Calabasas makes clear that you should make those comments before the vote starts.
Yes.
So, a combination of the two works nicely.
So, and then my last comment was failure to, and also, the, the, the title is "No Explanation of Vote." I think the title ought to be changed to "Explanation of Votes." And then on 6H, it reads, "Every member should vote unless disqualified for cause or by opinion of the city attorney," which basically gives the city attorney the, the power to say, "You can't vote on this," which I'm a little uncomfortable with, and I prefer the language saying, "Every council member should vote unless disqualified for cause," leading to either abstention or recusal from the vote.
I'm okay with that change. I mean, to be clear, right now, when I advise on conflicts issues, it's, it's purely advice. I can't force anyone not to vote.
The language implies you could just say, "Oh, you can't vote."
And I'm fine with the change to clarify that. I don't have that power.
I'm done.
Okay, you're done. Okay, let's, we have two cards here. I have one from Leonard. Come on down, and I have Linda Harmon on deck.
Leonard Clay, 412 North Fulton Street. As a matter of disclosure, I am married to Ms. Harmon, who's a member of the Arts Commission. The reason I'm here is the protocol, which eliminates a member of a commission from the discussion on new members. If there's a scheduling problem, which is what the, whoever wrote the report said, then you can just say, write something saying that, that the, that the mayor shall advise the commission chair when a meeting will be, and it's up to the, to the commission chair to come, him or herself, or send a representative at that time. But to eliminate any input on, on who would best fill the need of a voluntary commission, why are you eliminating that additional input from the people who best know? That, to me, just didn't make any sense. So, I would ask that that be reevaluated. In addition, I hope the Arts Commission gets filled soon, because my wife is spending way too much time covering from the two absent members. Thank you.
Linda.
412 North Fulton, Linda Harmon. That's why I came also. I'm very concerned that, that we might not have a representative on the interviewing process, because I think it's really important. I think people that work as a team need to know who's coming on, what kind of attributes they bring to the commission, what we, and they're the ones that we, we know, we're working together, we know what we need. And I just think it's really important that you continue that, have an advisor. And also, I really think it's important that we remain a strong commission, and there's been talk for years about cutting us down to five from seven, and I really don't think that's advisable. Well, there's plenty of work for seven people, believe me. And being short, as, as we have been, has been difficult, and even one of the former commissioners, commissioners is still helping us out, just to help us out till we get someone. So, we really love what we're doing, or we wouldn't be doing it. We're so grateful that we have an Arts Commission, but I really think we bring, each of us brings something different to the table, and I think if you cut it back, you're going to be missing a lot. So, that's my feeling.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, one question. Do we vote to change that?
Excuse me?
We haven't, no, we haven't voted on anything, so.
So, I just wanted to, I just wanted to express one thing. You know, we just, the mayor and I interviewed with the Chair of Recreation and Parks for one of their open seats, and the reality, well, we sat, all, all three of us sat through the interview, and ultimately, the mayor and I allowed the chair to actually pick the individual that they felt was in the best, they could best perform the functions of that commission. So, I agree with you 100 percent. I'm, I'm not opposed to that, you know, keeping that the way it was.
Okay.
This one's clear. The protocols eliminates, the proposed protocol eliminates.
Yes, the draft does, yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Michael, and then when you're the, the last one, I don't have a.
I'm sorry I missed the earlier part of the meeting, but I must have misread the documents in front of me, because my understanding was, that the suggestion was that the mayor would choose a member of the commission to serve on the interview. I'm comfortable with that. That would allow the commission to provide their input on what is needed. Currently, we have three applicants, for example, for two positions, and two of those applicants, in my view, would provide great strength to the commission in areas that are needed. So, I, I hope that that input, either from the chair or some other member of the commission, can continue to serve by providing information that otherwise might not be there, and I think it's necessary information. In terms of a seven-member art commission, I have to say we have been crippled for two months without the new members of our commission. We are very, very active, as you know. It's the nature of the beast. We're not just getting reports, analyzing, reading, making decisions. We're actively engaged in the arts in this community. Your support has been superb, and we appreciate that and want to be able to continue it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, we have now reached the end of the special meeting, which we're going to have to call into a German. How are we going to handle this? Does this go back to, to staff to try to incorporate?
One more revision.
What?
One more revision.
Okay, so we will refer it back to the.
You too.
The subcommittee and the, and the staff, and we'll get back to you. Okay. Thank you all. The special meeting is now adjourned. We'll take a short break, and then.